And I have the thumbs up that we are streaming. So 6:34, Monday, April 18th. This is the Select Board meeting. And we will start as we always do, with allegiance.
With allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, we're gonna do our introductions. Dave Hemway, Chair of the Select Board.
Marilyn Harris. Well, do you wait?
And on that note, as we go into announcements, you can probably all tell my voice sounds a little different than you might have heard. I had a lot of dust exposure for many, many days, so I'm still recovering from that. I'm not actually sick, but I would like to ask one of these Select Board to summarize the things why I'm not talking quite as much.
We'll start out with me, as I'm in line, I guess.
That works.
Yeah, and hey, bear with us, right?
That's right. Song and dance to.
That's right. So, announcements. Are we gonna start right out with?
Do we have announcements? I don't have any.
Okay. Alright, so, welcome, thank you for coming out, we appreciate it, and we're gonna hand it all over to you.
Okay, wonderful.
This is Greg Goodrich and Taylor St. Peter from VHB Associates, daily engineers at Close Pen Road.
Wonderful, can you all hear us in the back? Please raise your hand or speak up if, for whatever reason, you have a hard time. I think it's on. I generally have a loud voice, so that should help. So, thank you all for coming out tonight. Our purpose for this meeting is to just provide a basic project update. We've cleared the preliminary plan stage with New Hampshire DOT for this project, so we are officially in final design. And so that's exciting for us, that's when we do all our heavy lifting for the bridge design itself and kind of finalizing plans and so on and so forth. But this would be the perfect time to get back in front of you all, share with you the status of the project, show you what it has become since our last meeting, which was a few years ago now. It's been a little while, funny how times change. But in any event, we're excited to be here. And what we're gonna be focusing on in this particular meeting is impacts for the project and as that relates specifically to property owners and so forth. So, we'll share with you what the bridge is, and then we have a plan, and some of you may have already received a paper copy of it, it's got colored up. And we'll show that on the screen, and we can walk around, ask questions if you have any along the way, please feel free to speak up. So, with that in mind, oh, and, yep, so Taylor St. Peter is our project engineer for this job, and she's actually doing the design of the bridge currently, actually, so, in any event. So what we're gonna do is, there have been some changes since the original engineering study was done, and that has all been cleared. We've coordinated with Dana and the state of New Hampshire. The actual bridge with, and hopefully this shows up on screen, or some projectors are a little different than others, but can everybody see that or play?
No, it's pretty blurry.
Should be able to make that out, we're to be well. So, in any event, what, the biggest change that was made to this bridge is, we had originally slated it with 10-foot lanes, one lane in each direction with two-foot shoulders. And there was some discussion when we met with you all last time on having some room for, for instance, fishing on the downstream side of the bridge, that kind of thing, or if people are gonna go across the bridge, a little bit wider than the standard two-foot shoulder. So, we took that up with the state, and we originally proposed a slightly wider shoulder. And the standard was that it was gonna be two-foot lanes, or 10-foot lanes, two-foot shoulders across the bridge, and that was gonna be it. But there was, I believe, and I don't know the exact lineage of it, because I wasn't at the meeting, it was like, I'm gonna call it a gassit here, for, for the state funding. And apparently, there might have been somebody from the town, I don't know if it was an official or another, just concerned citizen that raised some concern about that. And so the state basically said that they would be willing to widen with the form of a raised concrete platform. So that's what we're showing on the right-hand side of the bridge, so this will be the downstream side, we'll show it in plan in a moment. Most folks would look at this and they would call it a sidewalk. The difference being, there's no sidewalk leading up to the bridge on either approach, so it's basically just on the bridge itself. So it'll be raised up six inches, or seven, actually, and it'll be about six feet wide all the way across the bridge. So if there are people that are gonna stand on the bridge, whether they're taking in the downstream view of the bridge, or they're just fishing, or whatever it is, that will be okay and it's acceptable, and the cost of which was approved by the state. So, we shared this view both with Dana and also with the state, so this is approved, and this is what we're moving forward with, what's going to happen.
Just a quick question.
Sure.
So that extra for the fishing is six feet out, and how wide is it, did you say?
It goes across the entire bridge.
But you have to walk onto the bridge, then onto that, onto the...
Nope. So if you see in plan view here, this strip, there's a dark line, if you can make that out, so that is the raised concrete platform, if you will. And there'd be a transition up to it on each approach, so the guardrail is behind it, so you would just walk up as though you were walking on the sidewalk, or walking on a shoulder, and you would just walk right up onto it. So you don't have to hop across the guardrail or anything like that, it's right there.
Okay.
And you'll just walk right across the bridge on the concrete platform, off onto the other side.
You just, that way by them doing that, you're not really making it any wider to take up more footprint, in a sense, right?
Yeah, so compared to what we were showing as part of the original engineering study before the state said make it the narrow width, then I would generally agree with that, yeah, it's basically in the same footprint, actually just a touch wider because we're still allowing for the two-foot shoulder. I think initially we were planning, what was it, the shoulder size, a five foot, maybe? It was gonna be a five-foot shoulder instead of a two-foot shoulder, so the three feet, so it's, I would say it's gonna be an additional three feet on account of that. So you have six foot plus two foot, so that's eight, just making sure.
Yes, and it's gonna be raised up seven inches or so.
That's correct.
It's like on a sidewalk, so cars will not...
Just, just like...
The edge of the bridge.
And that was the reason, we had that back and forth with the state, and said, could we just do it in the form of a wider shoulder? And they said, they didn't want to do that, they wanted to create that separation if there were actually gonna be people using that. If that was the purpose for it, then they wanted it to be raised.
Smart thing.
Yeah, oh yeah, I agree, but just for the record, that's, that's what that was for. Any questions?
If you're understanding.
Yes?
So, two 10-foot lines.
Yes.
And a six-foot wide concrete block. And then, still a two-foot shoulder next to the eight side?
Yep.
Yeah, that's what we need here.
So I'm just, the basic width, I'm just trying to make sure it's something four feet or three feet wide?
Thirty-three foot total out-to-out, including the brush curves and everything, but from rail to rail, yeah, thirty feet.
Thirty feet.
Correct. Yep, and I'll show you as a, for instance, what the narrow bridge was gonna look like. So this was the preliminary plans before they were revised with the shoulder. And this will show the exact difference. So this was before... So it was 24 feet, and that was rail to rail, and then we added the six-foot, the six-foot raised concrete sidewalk. So we kept the same, so you have 10-foot lane, two-foot shoulder on either side, and then the six-foot sidewalk, whereas the state's standard would just be the 10-foot lanes and the two-foot shoulders, and that's it. And what we were proposing at one point before we had to go down to this narrower version was this sidewalk was gonna be, or not sidewalk, shoulder, was getting to five feet instead of two feet. So, we were pushing it out three feet to make it a little wider, and the state said they didn't want it to be wider, so they wanted it to be the full six foot. Yep, you love it. Any other questions on, yes, sir?
There's two problems with the sidewalk, can I remove the snow? And, you know, two, does it create a vaulting hazard for vehicles hitting the road?
Yep, so that's a good question, and for the snow, we talked about that with Dana and...
Right.
The idea is, this is not really penned as a sidewalk, there's really no sidewalk on either side, so I don't know, in the bridge's current configuration, if there are many people that are standing out there during the winter, you know, if it's iced over or anything like that, it's probably not many people using it that time of year, so it actually could be used for snow storage. Because it's, if this, if the town wanted to go out there and shovel it off, you're more than welcome to do that, but if we had the original bridge with, you know, you would be plowing it, and it would be, there'd be snow packed up right against, you know, the bridge rail, in this case, you have that additional space. If nobody's using it, and if that's not a concern, then you don't have to do anything to it, you can leave the snow there until it melts. So it's really up to the town at that point, how they wanna handle that. But there's no, there's no reason that you need to remove snow there, because there's no sidewalk, and you're not really encouraging pedestrian use up and down the road, you know, during the winter months, as though it would never even there. So that, it's, it's basically, I don't know how we looked at that, it's, there's gonna be a ramp, but it's gonna be very low in terms of, what is the, is it a 10-to-1?
Yeah.
So it's, it's basically a 10-to-1, so it's not gonna throw something up, it's gonna be, it would be pretty gradual in terms of that, and I guess it depends on the speed you're traveling. If you're traveling at excessive rate of speed, then that could be more of a concern, but the posted speed of the road and the transition of it's gonna be fairly gradual, so we didn't want to create a blunt end for it, for sure, and so we figured this would be just like a tip-down for a curve. If you had a tip-down, if you had a sidewalk where you'd have a drive, you'd have a tip-down at that location, and it would be a very similar slope to that, so it's a similar condition.
Would that only be something that would matter on the up-hand side, since you're coming down to it anyway, so would that help mitigate that, that vaulting worry, since you're coming downhill towards it?
So, let me see if I understand. So, I guess on one side, on, let's see, if you're westbound, that would be on the inside of the curve, so it certainly wouldn't be anywhere near. On the incoming side, you are on the outside, but it's beyond the shoulder itself, so it's wider than the existing roadway is. The existing road is, I believe, 22 feet or 20 feet?
What, the tower, the thing?
Yeah.
Should be 21 feet.
Yeah, so we're going out, the bridge, from curb to curb, call it, is gonna be 24 feet, okay? And then you have the raised platform, so the actual bridge is gonna be wider than the approach roads, just in the roadway itself, forget the platform for now. So it'll be 24 compared to about 21, 22.
And just opposed, you thought, had the, that on the side?
Um, I don't know that we recommend doing that, because you'd be putting a fixed object in the clear zone, so we, we wouldn't recommend that, it would be a hazard, I would say. We generally wanna put any fixed objects, you know, in the clear zone or behind the guardrail, or something like that, so, but, I mean, like a bollard, for instance, I mean, they do use bollards on certain facilities, not in that particular application, but, yeah, I would say we'd probably recommend against that.
Are you gonna cut the road down some on the, by Frost Lane, are you, are you planning to cut that down some, so there's not that big drop to the, to the bridge?
Yep, we're gonna do the opposite, actually, we're gonna, we're gonna be building it up. So right now, so here's a profile view, so Frost Lane is somewhere in this vicinity right here, you're coming over, and then it dips down to, to the bridge, and in order, you know, we're putting in a slightly longer span, and we're improving the hydraulic capacity of the bridge, and to smooth it all out, we're actually picking that up, so it's gonna be a much smoother transition, so you're not gonna have that dip. It's gonna be, coming to sight distance meets standard, so it's gonna be to current standard.
Well, what, the reason I say that is because lots of times, when it's, snow melts and all that, right by Frost Lane and getting onto the bridge, it gets pretty icy, so people aren't paying attention, or they don't know it, it's gonna be dangerous, so.
Yep, and we're improving the superelevation transition with you there, too, so I'm sure Taylor can, she's been studying that very, very deeply, so she's very attuned to that, but yeah, the condition of the roadway is gonna be greatly improved for, for safety as far as that curve is concerned, as far as the bridge width is concerned, it's not gonna be a one-way bridge anymore, and sight distance is gonna be improved as the curve will meet the standard, so it's gonna be an improved facility. Yes, sir?
I was just wondering, how high are the guardrails gonna be on the bridge?
Yep. Is it 40?
Yeah.
So I can go back to that, sure. So it's a standard, well, actually, on the, on the downstream side, it's gonna be a 42-inch, which is standard for pedestrian height, and then on the other side, I don't think it's quite 42, is it 36?
Yeah.
36 on the non-raised platform side, which is a standard for the guardrail for traffic.
So, so each side's gonna be different?
Slightly different, no.
If I could ask people to say their name before their question, so I would be able to take your, keep track, thank you.
Any other questions for, yes, sir?
My name's Marilyn Island. My property line is the Bridge Bubbin. So if you, if you're leaving from here and you come off the bridge, my house is right there, after the bridge. So how is this going to affect my property line?
Yep.
Because, like I said, the Bridge Bubbin is my property line.
So, is this your property right?
That is my property right there.
Okay. Yeah, so we are coming off alignment slightly on that Bridge Bubbin side, in order to soften that curve, so that, that, however, we are tying in, so we're not widening the road by your property, okay? But where the, where the bridge is located, if I zoom in, perhaps you can see it. So the, the existing bridge is right about where this, where the circle is right here, that's where the kind of corner of the bridge is, and the wing wall comes off here, and the new bridge is gonna be to the south a little bit, so it'll be coming towards you a little bit, but the roadway, we're not impacting that width and where your drive is, that garage.
Now, that's my other concern, is that I parked on the other side of my garage, and I already cannot see when I'm coming out there, and I almost weekly, at least once of being on this hitch, I'm gonna pull out the driveway, so how much closer is that I can be putting traffic to my driveway?
So, as far as the edge of roadway, it's basically unchanged.
Okay.
But as far as when you get up close to the bridge, the bridge is moving, you know, the edge of the bridge is moving closer to your property, so, and if we wanna jump ahead to that, so there's a few things that are happening here. One, you notice there's a pipe going underneath the road here, so there's a big ditch on the far side of the roadway.
Yes, sir.
Right? And so one of the comments and requests that was made was to close up that ditch and put a pipe in it, in order to convey water. And so right now, if there were an air vehicle going across there, it would not go down into the ditch, that's gonna be filled, it would go straight into that field. And so there's gonna be a run of pipe put in there, and a new manhole, and then it's gonna be taken across, close to where that existing pipe is, there's, it's all kind of eroded right there, so there's gonna be a new run of pipe going across the road right there, so that, with a, with an apron, and it's gonna be armored with riprap, so that it doesn't erode, and it'll actually be improved, okay? So, so that is an improvement that's being made, out of a request that was brought forward at an earlier stage in the project, so that's, that is being handled. So if we wanna focus on your property for a moment, do you have a colored plan? Do you happen to have one of those?
Yes.
Okay, good. So what we're depicting here, there's a series of different colors, and I can relate the plan view of our plan sheets back to this exhibit. So, green is a temporary construction easement, in other words, there's gonna be some slope work done, we don't need to acquire the property, we just need to borrow it temporarily in order to construct the project, then that will be released back to the property. So that's green. Anything shown in blue, it would be a drainage easement, and that's done because there are some drainage facilities out there, so it's to actually make it what it should be today, if there's no drainage easement there today, there should be, so that it can be maintained in the future, so that, you know, the town or the state doesn't have to ask permission in order to maintain that drainage facility. They have to go in there and replace a pipe, we can do that. So you still own the property, but there's a, there's a perpetual easement over the top of it, if that makes sense, so that that can be maintained. So that's depicted in kind of the, I'll call it blue color, or cyan, or less is the proper depiction for that. So, on, on your property, and I'm sorry, what was your name again?
Marilyn.
Marilyn. So Marilyn, on, on your property in particular, there would be a slight, a small drainage easement there, and this is a little bit irregularly shaped, because the way the D reads, your property extends to the top of bank. So the drainage easement would go from the current property or the right-of-way line, I think it's straddling 10 feet over the pipe, correct?
Yeah.
And down to the top of bank, and then anything below top of bank is, I'm gonna say, properties of the town or state, so they don't need an easement for that. So that little piece would be an easement. And the pink is a permanent taking, so there is gonna be a sliver of permanent tape that is compensative. So that will be drawn up as an exhibit, and you'll be working directly with the town, and they'll approach you in terms of, you know, compensative for that piece that we need in order to construct the bridge. So this little pink sliver, we need that, because the actual bridge is gonna occupy a portion of that space. So, so that's the meaning for, for that pink sliver. And again, that extends to top and bank, from your original property line. You can see, your property line, as you said, touches the, basically goes right to the (blows blow, blows blow), I talk with my hands a lot. So the, the property line goes right to the corner of that, inside that roadway, so, and that's, and the new roadway is gonna just kind of extend just in that corner, inside just a little bit. So, so that's, does that explain what you're seeing on your property, does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. So that's what's proposed, and so I guess, so that addresses Marilyn's property. Dee, I believe the drainage easement is on your property, is that correct?
It looks like that, Blue, yeah, it's mine.
Yep, okay, so, and hopefully that's meeting with what your general expectation is.
Did you say you're, you're gonna put a pipe in and cover it over?
That's correct.
Boy, you're right on.
Yep.
That's what I like, 'cause we have, now we can bury cars in that ditch.
Right.
More than I wanna say.
How many feet of pipe are you gonna run on that, before we can get to the road?
Uh, do you know, Taylor, with the link, she'll look into that right now, we do have that. So, and Dee, just to kinda clarify, so the, the deep part of the ditch that's coming, if you were to drive straight off Close Pen Road, that's gonna be covered in.
Yeah.
And you can see where the pipe is, there is gonna be a small ditch that is obviously there now, that will remain, but that's, that's very small.
Right, but the main part will be covered, so people go off the bridge there and be on my property.
Precisely.
Which has happened before, too, so.
The pipe is about 70 feet or 80?
70 feet, we'll say, parallel-ish to Close Pen Road before you go under.
Is that gonna have manhole, is that gonna have a manhole and clean out before it goes across?
Correct, yeah, that's, that's right at the bend, there's gonna be a structure there.
So, and I, I have one other question about that young lady there that was just speaking about her property, if somebody does do that, six foot for sidewalk, because you gotta get on that and off it if you fish it.
Yep.
Okay? So, when they step off in that sidewalk, are you gonna be on her land, not the town land?
Nope, that's all gonna be in-town property, because the roadway is gonna be in the right-of-way, okay? There's nothing that's gonna be constructed outside of the right-of-way, so the apron, the curve of the road, everything that's gonna be, once they step off, off this transition here, see, see all the guardrail that's in here, the wing wall, all of that is gonna be in owned right-of-way. So the only way that they would be on her property is if they stepped over the guardrail and came off that way, then they would be on her property, but if they stay on the front side of the guardrail and they're walking in the street, they'll never traverse her property. Yep, that's, that's how that's all gonna be.
That's the property that you guys are taking.
That little sliver, that pink sliver that's on that sheet, that's gonna, yes, correct.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other questions on that particular location, and then Dee, like this, I'm sorry?
No, none on that.
Okay, yeah, and we'll just kinda go around the horn, if you want, would you wanna jump to yours? Yep, sure.
Sharon Langton, and I'll go for Frost Lane, it actually says Howard Rock, I love that one.
This one right here with the green?
Oh, Frost Lane.
Oh, I'm sorry, Frost. Yes, 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 here.
Yes.
Okay, are you partial for?
No, no, 12-1.
12?
12-1 on Frost Lane, or that's right next to the bridge?
Okay, right here?
Yeah.
Okay? Yep.
Yeah, so, the construction, so I have two concerns. When you're done with the construction, what can you do to put it back in?
Yep.
Yeah, so that the river doesn't come up over that property and that, so what's done when you're, when you're done with it?
Yep, so this is all gonna be restored, okay? If we come over to, this is the plan view of that, so there's gonna be a new pipe extended across underneath Frost Lane and outlet, and this'll all be riprapped, it's not, it's not shaded right now, but we'll have riprap along the slope, and that'll all be armored, and then, and then above that would be grassed, well, you see? So it would all be restored and shaped and sloped inside of the impact, so anywhere where you see this dotted line, and that's not on the plan that you have, but it's all contained within that, is, is all gonna be kinda shaped and then, I would say, restored in the final portion.
So where the drainage comes out, that would be?
Riprap, stone, stone lined all the way down to the channel. Yep.
So, left of that, and then, yes, with that.
Correct. And, and the other thing I would point out, too, is Frost Lane is pretty steep right now, coming down to the road. The road itself is coming up, so it's actually improving that condition, so it won't be as steep coming into, coming into Close Pen Road. So, so that will actually, you'll see kind of what we would perceive as a safety benefit and an improvement to that condition, so.
And, um, the other question is how, um, how is the, like, I live, that's a, I have Frost Lane, so the rapids really hit my property after they come through the bridge?
Yep.
Um, are you, is that even have to be reflowing around?
It's gonna improve, and I would argue, um, so right now, so you can kinda see it on this plan, uh, the channel, if you can see the contours here, and I know it's a little different to read it, but on the, on the east side, it's gonna be very close to where the bridge is now in terms of on the channel and remake. It's pretty much where the river wants to be. Um, however, on the other side, it's constricted by the existing bridge. The existing bridge is shorter than it should be. And from a, I'm gonna throw a big word out, uh, but it's, uh, geomorphically incompatible with the stream. So, what we've done as part of this design is, uh, we, we've, um, basically improved the hydraulics and the hydrology and the geomorphology of the stream, so that right now, you have, once it goes through there, you get a lot of, you get a lot of churning and you get a lot of rap, and it's going to improve that condition because we're, we're opening that up, because it's narrower right now than it wants to. So, some of that erosion that you're seeing on the downstream side is, is on account of that. So, if you can see these contours, this is where the existing bridge abutment is today. And then, the new bridge abutment will be back in this location. So, it's moving back, and that's gonna be laid back so that the, the water can flow through there more freely like it wants to. But, I would say that one of the interesting things about this particular reach is that it changes regime. And what that means is upstream, you have a lot of rocks, it's very fast-moving. And then downstream, by your property, it's not. It, it opens up and it slows right down. It's a different type, different classification of stream. So, there is a transition, a natural transition that happens when you have all this water moving down with energy, and then it fans out and just kinda naturally slows down. But, the intent is that that's gonna be improved so that you won't have as much churning after it goes through the bridge, cause the bridge is acting like a venturi. So, it's gonna be, uh, more natural. And we've worked directly with the Department of Environmental Services. They've reviewed this with us, and they've agreed that this design is appropriate. So.
I, I may, I, cause I own that property, I'm right next door.
Yep.
And I'm actually, I'll be restoring, right? I think I'll have that, I'm saying, but I'm wondering if the engineer should look at this so they can, look at a lot of losing to engineer?
Oh, you have an engineer working on that currently?
Yeah, cause if this is gonna change, you know, or like something like?
It should, it should improve it, but they should definitely be aware of it if they're making some improvements on your property. Yeah, for sure. Yeah, that would be good.
So, just to, to make sure that I've got this clear, the overall effect of this, because it's a wider passage, means that it will be calmer and it will be less erosion?
Downstream of the bridge, precisely. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yep. And that, and that's, and that's something, just if I may clarify, in terms of, and that's what's driving the design of this bridge, is stream crossing. And, and all that geomorphology and everything else, and the hydraulics naturally, it's all something that's, uh, we're, we're, uh, working very closely with the state on. And that's what's making the span what it is. Precisely. Go on. Yes, sir.
All right, um, how does Jerry assess what the distance is from the old abutment to where the new one's gonna be?
Um. The old span was sixty feet, if I recall correctly. The new span is a hundred and seven. So, it's probably gonna be, it's gonna be a little less than four. I, I know the math isn't gonna work out exactly right, because we are pushing the east abutment just slightly, maybe five feet back or so, but not much. So, if you call it at seven, just to make the math work, you know, sixty, call it forty. Plus or minus. I have to check with her.
Doing fairly well so far.
Right.
To follow up on his question about the abutments, um, since that's that southeast of property, roughly how much further south is that abutment moving?
That is a, well, let's see, it looks like the center line of the road is pretty close to that, so you've got twelve, plus six, plus about two, uh, so, what's that math? Uh, twelve plus six is eighteen, so you'd call it twenty? Twenty feet? Kind of south. Yes, sir.
Rusty, ready, Frost Lane?
Yep.
Um, how, how much closer is the abutment, the bridge abutment, gonna be to Cross Lane and Cross State?
It is gonna be closer. Um, and I would say it's probably in the vicinity of that forty feet that we were talking about, cause it's, it's moving, um, but the wing walls, eh, yeah, they're, it's pretty similar to the wing wall that's out there today. You can kinda see it right here. And the new wing wall will be in a similar shape in the back, um, and then sloped. And that'll all be contouring in front, but, yeah.
Okay, um, one, one more question. So, the mouth of Frost Lane, is that gonna be widened or? How's that gonna, you know, or is it gonna stay, I'm just saying, I see a guardrail coming up there on the right?
Yep, and so, uh, this is based on protecting, uh, from a safety standpoint, vehicles, cause we're in the outside of a curve naturally, so if there were an errant vehicle, you don't want it striking a blunt end, so we carried it beyond the, uh, beyond the clear zone, and then we have a terminal end treatment that, that kinda goes up parallel the Frost Lane. So, um, that is extending. The width of it, as far as how much wider? It looks like it's gonna be pretty close to what's there today. So, it's not, we're not widening per se, but we're improving. It's gonna be paved the end of it. I believe that, is that, well, there's an apron and then it's, I believe, along that, cause it's a determined surface now, so.
So, Close Pen Bridge is actually, is being built up, so it's not gonna be much of a, as much of a hill there?
That's correct. It's coming up. Yes, yes, it will.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, go on.
So, I, I have another question. You sure you're gonna build up the upper end?
Yep.
If you don't, how, so you're gonna build up the lower end as well, or you said no?
Um, slightly, but what we're trying to do is get back down, um, as quickly as we can. So, here's the profile.
So, your bridge is gonna be, bridges are gonna sit level?
Oh, definitely not. Definitely, and it's not level now. Um, and it's gonna be at about five point four percent is, is what the profile's gonna be. And the existing one isn't a whole lot off of that. It's probably, I'm gonna throw out four percent or so, uh, currently. Yeah, it's, it's definitely not level now, cause you can kinda see, uh, see how it falls across there. So, we are picking up the south end, it looks like, oops. If we call this close to the south end. So, this is the existing four thirty-seven point four, four fifty point two five. So, roughly three feet, um, on the south end, close to that. And then on the upper end, it's going up.
Along knife, and the knife has started now, ray will be back across the bridge, cause it's two foot below across the speed that it is now.
Yep, well, actually, no, you're right. Yeah, I see that, because that's picking up here, not the actual, uh, road surface. But maybe if we go to this next one, uh, four forty-seven point six to four forty-five, so two point, so that's almost two feet there. So, it's a little bit more than two feet, cause we're, uh, we're kind of expanding back up. Um, but then on the side, uh, first about three, a little over three feet on the, on the west side.
There's gonna be a lot more to do.
Yeah. Yep, so one, one foot, uh, one side is going up two feet, the other side's going up three feet. So, about a foot difference from one end to the other, roughly. Longer span, yeah, precisely, yeah. Questions? We can, uh, move back around to, did, did I answer your questions on the Frost Lane corner? I guess in terms of the, uh, the impacts that you're seeing here and whatnot. Um, so basically, what you're seeing, you've got kinda the rainbow happening right there. Um, so the pink is gonna be a permanent take. Um, and the, the reasoning for that is because we've got some slope easement there, um, and we've got that, that pipe that's gonna be coming across. Um, what are the exact, do you recall, Taylor, in terms of the pink and why not? Right there, because it's off.
The wing wall comes off there if you want.
Oh. Taylor was working directly with our, so. So, here's the bridge plan. Yeah, and that's right. So, basically, what's happening is that wing wall, um, is gonna be encroaching on, on that. So, that, they want that to be in permanence, just so that, you know, uh, the town owns that. You don't wanna own the bridge. Right in part of it, yeah. So, so that's why that's pink. Um, and then, uh, the blue is to maintain that perpetual drainage easement. And then the green would just be for temporary to construct, and then once construction's over, then that would revert back to you entirely. So. Yep, yep, restored. Correct. Yep.
Yeah, so the little, so you got the little trees, need the light, can't hear what you're saying?
Yep. Yes, correct.
So, I have Sharon Langton again, um, you're removing trees from there?
Yes.
How, how much is that, you know, what's, what's the width of that area that you're removing trees?
Um, depends on where, as all things go. That's gonna be a little bit harder to get to an exact number. And as far as, like, do all these need to be replaced? Like, it looks like there was a couple up here. That could be something that traditionally, they would take that out if there's something that they wanna save, that's outside, they've got the clear zone, cause it's behind the guardrail and everything. So, if it's possible to, if it's not much of a change in height, it could potentially. Um, but really, if you throw too much dirt on top of a river system, it's probably not gonna fare well for the tree anyways. Um, so it really depends on how much for all they're adding in that general occasion, as to whether or not they really want to try and save the tree right there or not. I'm not an arborist, but from what I understand, that's, yeah.
I'm just, I'm just wondering.
Yeah. It's gonna look different. It, it is, it is. It's, it's gonna look different, but there is definitely, you know, as you move downstream, there's never trees, there are kinda pick up here. Those would not be affected, we wouldn't be getting them to those. The ones that I would propose would be are the ones that are gonna be inside the, the construction limits themselves, so they can do their slope, you know, construction slope rating. So, I mean, it's gonna be, uh, we'll say, um, a different look initially, uh, when the bridge is constructed out there, naturally, it's gonna look very new.
So, it's like it's the first two large trees?
That's, that's kinda what it looks like here, although, um, I suspect there might be some others that are creating that buffer, that it's gonna be kinda lower scrub and whatnot, that, that's definitely gonna get cleared.
Do they put anything back or just grass?
Um, typically just grass, um, but if there's, you know, I can't speak for the state, that's a discussion that we could have, if they wanna do plantings or something like that. Um, that would have to be a discussion.
It's a slope, yeah, and again, we're removing, you know, most trees, so.
Yep.
Sure, so, you know, that's sort of, it's sort of there.
Sure. Yeah, it would be stabilized, and anything that we put back would be a stable slope, and it, or it'll be ripwrapped. Um, so that's typically how that works. Um, because a lot of times we're correcting slopes that aren't stable. Uh, they're too steep, things like that. So, that's why the limits kind of extend out at times. You have any questions?
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Um, Sharon, talking again, I just wanna know, it might be a silly question, but, by moving the abutments back on both sides, are you also widening the riverbanks? Is the river gonna be wider than it is now?
Yeah, that's a, that's a really good question, and I would say, um, and I don't know if we have one showing proposed contours, but, actually, this one is. Existing contours, just. No, yeah, but we can, we're up to it. So, um, upstream, we're certainly not chasing it far at all, because there are a lot of boulders up there, and it's a, you know, it's really nice, and we don't wanna touch it. Um, so, we're trying to tie in as quickly as we can, and we don't need to, quite frankly. Um, because what's happening, um, again, if we zoom in and as we were talking about, you know, kinda the stream characteristics and whatnot, you can see, there, it's kinda, it's, it's unnatural looking where the existing bridge is. It juts out into this, into the channel, and we're pulling that back. So, you know, we're gonna be grading back to the channel, so we're, our limits of construction are here, so we're tying into the existing bank that, that goes upstream. So, we're not that far upstream at all. Um, and then downstream, because you have that, um, it's almost like a basin that's gotten kinda scoured out, because you have all that energy moving through, and then it's expanding out and churning and running. Um, that's what we're really trying to mitigate. And so, that, almost the little peninsula that's there on the existing bridge is gonna be kind of pulled back and smoothed out to help with that transition of the, the channel coming to the river.
Cause you have that little island right, right under the, uh, right, right, from the, uh, there's a, there's a little island. So, I, and that won't be affected, that shouldn't be affected.
No, we're not, we're not going down there at all.
I didn't know if, if, you know, if making the banks a little bit wider there. I know it makes it flow wider, so it'll, it won't be as fast.
Right.
So, I mean, that island's been underwater a lot of springs.
Oh, sure, oh, yeah. No, it, it definitely, uh, and I think there's some backwater effect. I don't know exactly what's downstream, but, um, there, that's not unusual where you get some backwater and it actually floods. It's not necessarily, uh, you know, the elevation of the river upstream. It, it has more to do with what's going on downstream in that, in that channel, and it just kinda backs up into that basin. I suspect that's what's happening there. Yeah.
Thank you.
Right.
Yes, well, there we go. Uh, the bridge abutment gets to the far right, which is just by our property area, where our, which borders our property. How far south did you say it was in the head?
Uh, so this, it looks like approximating about twenty feet, um, off of the existing torch.
So, it's gonna be twenty feet closer to my goal, basically, I would say.
Yep. Yeah, and, and the whole reasoning for that is because this curve coming off of Close Pen, off the bridge itself was very sharp, and it doesn't meet current design criteria in terms of, uh, design speed. You can't make that current, um, you know, well, at least. There might be some who are skilled enough to do so, but it's not per code.
Let me tell you something about that corner. People are coming around that corner daily at fifty plus miles an hour.
Yeah, and that's not safe.
Okay?
Yeah.
You straighten that out? Somebody takes my wife out, who's door am I gonna come knocking on? You know what I'm saying? I mean, it's, it's, it's brutal down there. And I thank you for wanting to fill in that bitch over, over Crossway from these, because I can't tell you how many cars I've pulled out of that ditch during the winter time. Because they're just not paying attention.
And, and, and that's what we're trying to do. And actually, um, were you at the previous public meeting a few years ago, by chance?
No, because we were never, ever notified of any of them.
Okay. Um, if you'll bear with me for a moment, I, we've got kind of a early representation, um, about that that I can kinda share real quick, just to kinda, it's not, um, it should be a good representation of what we're trying to do, in order to give you a visual. Um, so, naturally, this is the existing, so Frost Lane is right here, and you can see how sharp that is. But we've got. Okay, so, again, looking east, Frost Lane to your right. Okay, so this is on alignment, if you will. If we were putting a bridge back on the existing alignment. Okay, so this is on alignment, if you will, if we are putting a bridge back on the existing alignment. Again, it widens out a little bit, but it's still very, very sharp. And then that's what we're doing as part of this, is softening that curve. So that's really one of the safety improvements. There was a study that was done, I think it was 2015 timeframe, and this area, this specific bridge for being too narrow and too sharp. So that's what we're trying to mitigate, in addition to the bridge not being up to standard in terms of load carrying capacity and condition.
I agree with everything you do to make it safer, but I'm just telling you the fact that people are flying a lot easier today than they are right now. It's been dangerous for the house. You know, I've got some crews that come sit down around weekends, and they have that COVID, half an hour.
Right, right. Right.
And that's hoping it's not just a safety issue.
Right. Yep, yeah, rural roads, they would just be better.
So that telephone pole left there, is that gonna stay where it's at now?
It'll, it'll move slightly. Yeah, every, we actually, we'll be coordinating a utility meeting here shortly, and we'll be relocating that slightly. It'll move, but it'll still, it'll end up being within the right line.
I'll go ahead and ask for them, because on the plan, I need to show them on the screen. I noticed that the garage is also pitched there. So can you give them an idea of new bridge abutment to the garage, roughly that distance is expected to be?
If I had CAD open, I could tell you exactly. Uh, to venture, yeah, uh, let me see what it takes. Fifty, so it's probably in the order of 100 feet now, so it'll be more like eight. Roughly. I'm not measuring it precisely, but it looks like we're on the order of about 100 feet straight line distance from the garage to the corner of the existing bridge, and that's going to be 20 feet, so the radius, the rough, rough. But just a little bit of approximation.
Craig Fournier, Dear Little Road. I noticed you're using a steel girder design.
That's correct.
What made you choose that design, and what's the lifespan of this bridge, just to say?
100 year design, so that's what that's designed for. We looked at concrete and also steel, and the problem with concrete is they would have to furnish that in a full length. They would have to transport it at 100, roughly 109 feet, center to center bearing's 107, so add another foot on either end roughly. So that would be a challenge, just because of how curvy the roads are, it's not directly right off the highway kind of thing. So what we're gonna do is, this is still gonna be the same length beam in steel, but we can furnish what they call an optional splice, so they can splice the girder, so they can bring it out in two pieces if they want. Say, you know, 60 and 40, and they can transport that much easier, bring it onsite, take it together with the crane, and then hoist it and put it in place. That's one of the biggest advantages, and the other is weight and some other things, but it's, you could, you could definitely do this out of concrete, and we certainly looked at that, but we felt like, from a constructability standpoint, it was gonna be, this was gonna be a better option, of course.
What about your cost?
Those numbers change, as we all probably realize. The steel at the time was certainly the most advantageous. It was the cheapest, but where steel prices are today, that's obviously changed, there's no doubt about that. And when this bridge is actually advertised for construction, you know, there can be corrections. I don't have a crystal ball, but I can tell you that right now what we're seeing is concrete prices are more competitive than steel. And that's just the way things are right now, and that changes, and we've seen it just the opposite. And how much will it change in the next year or so? We'll find out. Is there gonna be a correction entirely? I would say probably not.
You're gonna put this out to bid, right?
Yes, absolutely.
And make the rest of the bidding.
Yeah, we're looking at, we'll say, next spring, or about a year from now, maybe a little before, so, yeah. It goes out to bid, yep. There would probably be about a month advertisement, open bids, you know, or, yeah. So they'll start construction next year sometime. And depending on the contractor, some like to build, kind of, in the winter, do some of the steel work and whatnot, and then come back in the spring and finish up some final restoration and whatnot, so some of the bridges that we've recently constructed, that's what the choice to do is actually start and follow.
And the contract that will be shut down, would you have, would you have a back in mind?
Yeah, we'll work with you on that. That is gonna affect cost, as all things go. You can push it to work faster, but that increases the cost. So, did we look, I know we looked at that initially, we should refresh that and get back to you. I don't wanna speak off the cuff. I have a good feeling what I think it should be, but I wanna prove that a little more succinctly.
Because I'm just curious.
Yeah, we would wanna give them a construction season. You know, we don't wanna push them to do accelerated construction here, because there's a cost to do that. And where you have a detour in place, pretty much detour, you know, we know it's not gonna be painless, but we feel like that's gonna give us the most, and a contractor's gonna want that, I mean, any contractor, they always wanna do traditional construction, but if we have to do accelerated, we can.
Well, no, I don't think you have to. I would kind of hear what you're saying.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. No, it's a good question. I would say, plan for construction season, what that means contractually, we can adjust that and dial that in for you.
So I wanna ask you a quick question, which I believe our town administrator can answer, but maybe you would be better appropriate for that. I know one of the concerns that we've heard plenty of is because this is in the state, giving, retaining, funding, et cetera, et cetera. Just wanted to make sure that we're still gonna be okay in that timeframe.
Yes. So I asked Ron Kleiner at the state, he's the one that runs the bridge program, the municipal bridge program for the state, and he said, no problem. Yep, it's not gonna be an issue.
I have a question. If we have the plans now, and why are we waiting another year? If the state okays, okay this, right, am I correct in that? This plan, basically, they located or no?
We have approval of preliminary plans.
Okay. So I just wondered why we just gonna start putting out the bid this year, and why do we have to wait a whole year?
Sure. So there's a number of things that still have to happen in order to get it ready for advertisement. We're working on final design now, so in the plan set that we have now, 23 sheets, when we're done with it, it's gonna be north of probably 40. So we're adding a number of sheets to it, we're doing the final design of the beams, the abutments. All those details aren't in the sheet set right now, so that's all the nuts and bolts and stuff that we are driving on currently. In fact, Taylor is doing that design now. So that's one aspect of it, but that's not the long pole in the tent. Once we get approval of preliminary plans, which we now have, we needed to get to this stage to where we can set the impacts, and then, which we've done, and then we've looked at what we have for proposed easements, which is kind of the plan you have in front of you, but that's an informal plan, but that is the proposed line work that we have. If that's acceptable, then what we're gonna do is we're gonna create, we're gonna create abstracts that are gonna be recordable to the registry of deeds, and then there will be a negotiation in terms of compensating for the various easements and right-of-way takings, and that is a process that takes time.
Okay, yeah.
So once we get right-of-way clear, then we can go to construction, we can advertise. And that's really, and then we also have permits that we have to finalize, and all of that gets done now that we have, the key is getting preliminary plan approval, because what that means from the state is they're good with our design, and then we get the approvals, and everybody else is okay with it, we move forward. And the impacts aren't gonna grow from what we're showing today. We lock those lines down, and we move forward. So that's what we're doing. So there's a number of things.
Oh, gosh, yeah, I'm sure, plenty of red tape.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Good, does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
So that's, so permits, right-of-way, and final design.
Okay, thanks.
Wait, Angela. Can all of your paperwork be done by the end of this year, so bids can go out, so the project could start the day school closes, or the day after, possibly? I live on the other side of the bridge. Now, if they start to do work in the winter, I'm just picking the timeframe here, it's tougher for the fire engine and the ambulance to go up and over the hill if that bridge is out of service. I don't wanna see it out of service during the winter. Okay, if I need an ambulance, I want it, same thing with the engine. So my strong suggestion to everyone is, get the bids out early, you know, after you get all the paperwork done, everything's all approved, so the day after school closes, in June, they can start work, just my thought process here, and get it done before the snow flies, you know, next year.
Yep, that makes sense. We'll have to look at in terms of the timeline, how that can work. The key there is gonna be right-of-way process. And getting all that, if everybody signs on board in terms of the right-of-way, and all the permits are in place, the design will be done by the end of the year. You heard it from her.
So, she's gonna... Like I said, that's anyone that lives on the other side of that bridge. Okay, because it takes quite a bit for Boston, which is a level of quiet about, my house catches on fire, for them to come. Concord's Pentagon Station, it's staffed, okay, but if they're downtown or out on the cold, then we have to wait for a unit to come, you know, from downtown Concord, and Hocke that's gotta come up by the Red Vine. It gets to be a nightmare, and we don't want it, I don't think the chief wants it during the winter. It just gives him a major problem, and the same thing with Blue Street.
So the one thing that we would have to consider in all this, and it's not something that we can control, and that is procurement of steel. And I can tell you right now that some of the steel fabricators aren't touching projects that they have to furnish within a year. So in other words, when they procure, when they get their contract, so if somebody bids the job, we'll say in February, and bids are open, we'll say, you know, February 1, and we give them a notice to proceed, we award the job, say, mid to late February, they can turn around, and they can, they will procure their steel, and they're gonna, you know, get their contracts in place with their fabricators. Depending on where the market is at that time, if it gets worse, it could push out. If it gets better, it could come in, but some steel fabricators aren't even bidding jobs that they have to furnish steel within a year. And that's an unfortunate truth, and I, that's something that we just can't control.
So will the money still be there, because that happens?
Yes, the money will be there.
Okay, the money, next year the money would be there, but would it be there for 2024?
Yes. Yep. What's gonna happen, and I, we've had this happen on other projects where, you know, we'll say a project was, actually, one of the ones we did recently in Concord, the city wasn't ready. We were ready to go, and I think it was 2018, we'll say, but the city was not. For whatever they had going on, project-wise, interior to them, and whatever. The money was ready and could be allocated, the state was appropriating the money, but it pushed out a year. The state just swapped a project that was ready for the project that wasn't ready, and they just, it was all earmarked, there was no problems, they just, it was a shell game, basically. So if you're in the system and they tell you that the funding is there, and I asked Ron this very direct question, because I knew it was a concern, and we talked about it with him, and he didn't bat an eyelash and said, the money is there, it won't be a problem. So it's, whether or not it's in fiscal year 2023 or 2024, they're not concerned, they're not gonna pull the funding.
Okay, I think last question. Is the bridge safe enough to last till 2024?
Yeah, and that...
Yes or no?
I haven't been out there for a while. The bridge is safe to cross.
Okay. So...
It's not gonna, like, I understand there's problems with the deck. And I understand there's some problems with the guardrail. You know, I mean, we wanna replace the bridge, we're not trying to drag our feet by any means. I wouldn't recommend taking a semi into it at 60 miles an hour, however.
Well, they, they already posted it.
Right, yes, understood.
So it's posted. I just wanna know if it's gonna be safe enough for the chief's equipment, the engines and everything, to go across that until 2024, if that's when the bridge is replaced?
What I would say is, if the state changes the rating, then that could change that picture. If the state doesn't do that, because the state's responsible for doing the inspections and the ratings on that bridge. So if anything happens between now and then, they would notify you. So if that doesn't change, and they're doing the inspections on their cycle, then, you know, from what I've seen, I haven't seen anything that said I wouldn't, you know, take a vehicle across, it's not safe to cross, anything like that. They would, I've closed a bridge before. I don't like to, but we do. And there's nothing that I saw on that bridge that said I have serious concern over traversing it. So it's... Yep, so the state would notify you, I guess is what I'm saying, if that was necessary.
So I wanna follow up on his question in the middle, which was the timeframe. When he mentioned after the last day of school, you had previously mentioned a full construction season. Rodney, how long is a normal full construction season, and is that a reasonable expectation? Or would have to be closer to a spring start in order to, say, before the snow starts flying again?
Yep, so construction season traditionally would be, call it April 15 to whenever the plants close for furnishing asphalt, so it could be, you know, early November timeframe, whenever it starts to get, that may be November, December 1 sometimes, but that would be kind of a traditional construction season, so spring to late fall. It just depends when the contractor has awarded the job and when they wanna start. If you wanna hold them off, in other words, if we did bids and they were, we'll say, bids due in April, and they were awarded the job in May, if they had to procure steel and they had to do it all in this season, because you said you didn't want them to have the road open, or the road closed through the winter, they would say, okay, we're gonna start the following season, that's what they're gonna have to do. And that would go into their planning. So if it's written into the spec that that's the case, then that's what they'd have to stick to. Because if they can't furnish the steel, and they can't get the span erected and operable before the winter, then they're forced to do it next year. But yeah, as far as the size of the bridge and the complexity of it, they can construct it in one season. So, but the procurement of steel is, I think, gonna drive that discussion right there. Based on what we're seeing. Yes.
Sharon, again, when, does anybody come up with this stuff with, like, will anybody come up with it? Or do they, like, you know, just sort of visual, I don't know what to say?
Yeah, that's not unusual, and that would be something that we would organize with the town, because they're gonna do the negotiations, so, yeah. That's, yeah, to stake things out, to kind of work with the property owner, property owner meetings, absolutely.
My fair being on. Two questions. The first one, you said 100 years, are you galvanizing still?
Metalizing. Well, actually, are we weathering on this? We are metalizing, yeah, metalizing.
Because you said it was gonna be...
It's very similar to gal, are you familiar with metalizing?
We were saying it was gonna be, because of the depth, yeah, splice.
Optional splice for transportation. Optional splice for transportation. Galvanizing, it depends on the length of the bed and Duncan galvanizing, they don't do 60, unless they double dip. You know, I think it's, I want to say 45 feet is their limit. I think. Well, if, if you double dip it, yeah. So we, we would be okay with that. Because one of the things that we're also doing was repairing the outside curves. You want it, you want it, I mean, if you want it just bare, galvanized, you can. Well, no, it's not, it's not to maintain. It's just for aesthetics. And I think we were proposing black, if I'm not mistaken, just to kind of tone it down a little bit. So it's not bright steel color. And the same with the railing.
My question is, because of the detour, fires on several of us, if it's going to take more than one construction season, the whole contract, the contract will go to the city. Are we drawing one in the same sense, no construction season?
Well, that, that's going to be with the town. Because if the town doesn't want it to be closed during the winter, we're not going to necessarily draw the line there from what we're seeing. But if that's a town need and a concern of the town, then we can certainly do that. But if you, if you want to push them, they can do it. If they have, if they know they're going to have steel in, say, July or August, and they know they can set the steel and they know they can get the deck in place and they can get the approaches up and they can get it paved by the end of the season, then they would do that. But the concern being, you know, if they get bids in and that's, you know, early in quarter one, they may not be able to get steel on site in that calendar year. That's where they're at right now. And, and historically, that hasn't been the case. It could be six months. It could be five months. It depends on where that particular fabricator is, but with supply chain and labor shortages and you name it. And you've heard all the, all the buzzwords, right? And, and that's real. And that's real. And furthermore, they, fabricators would traditionally carry a bid for 30 days. They're carrying it for one. So we're giving you a bid today. You come to me tomorrow. It's a different price. That's real. And we've been putting in specs now to cover for that so that the contractor's not strung out because they're putting that in their bid in terms of risk because they don't know what the price is going to be. And so we've been working with them to try and control the, you know, not control, but to try and work with them to help manage and mitigate their risk. It's, it's a very difficult assignment right now. And I'm hoping that changes, but I don't know. Any other questions? Good stuff. So we talked about the two properties on the south side of the bridge and I think we touched on the one. Well, actually, maybe we didn't yet, but are there any questions on the detour road? Good, okay. How about on the other side? I don't know if there's anyone here from the parcel on the north side, northwest side. Questions? Once again, all the green is temporary. It's not a lot of green. This has been fun. I know it's a lot going on and there's a lot of, but if there are any questions, feel free to reach out to any day of concern, which go to us and we'll respond to this. Yep. We're looking forward to wrapping this up for you guys. Any other questions, comments? Do you want to know any good jokes? Well, thank you all very much for your time. We appreciate you coming out. And if anybody wants any copies of any of the plans or anything, they're up there for the taking at first. Thank you for coming up. So you're proud of the episode. They can do that, but they were just tied into our project. But it would be good for them.
So we have a six foot section.
Make them work at that. We're not really going to change the grading. Yeah, we can give that to you. In fact, he doesn't have our revised ones. Gone back and forth on search.
So we have six feet here. Then this is 10 feet.
We have 10, two, 10 feet.
Oh, 2 feet.
That, I don't know. That's a really good question. That's based on whatever our surveyor saw. And that's whatever they read. So we didn't, we just, we just interpreted it and we said. Well, that, that would be, you know, that would be something that I can ask our surveyor and see like what might have happened, but. I, that's not my lawyer.
How's Mallow doing?
Good. How are you? And he was pretty small on the corner. He was watching.
I know.
You know, we all, we all pay attention.
Yeah, but I mean, they need to fix it all. They get, and then ditch. I had 15 years ago. A young guy over my house, he and my daughter, he left. It was smelling icy. He had left in the ditch. So many of you are, so now they're getting rid of that ditch.
Well, that can be a concern.
I think, I think, I think it's important not to, I'm afraid it too much. We've got to make sure that.
Oh, sure.
And I wanted to show Rodney out of the rest of the side for reading, guys. If you're looking towards the rest of it, you're starting to be aware of that.
The state, if I started this, it was on the edge. To four pounds. And I kept, I went on to do this, like, 22. She was, who was going that far down? And then she was like, it was a coffee. I come, he had a second. Then we had to give a 20th notice and we had it on Friday night. And I said, this needs to stop. This is bad news. You can't do this. This is not working. So I said, I was doing the next day and saying.
Your question is.
Sure.
You made a statement that this is a local process. You said the contractors, the state and all the engineering.
No, 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 for steel fabrication.
Right, but still a local process.
It is, absolutely. It is, it is. The fabric. No, not the contractor. Yeah, understood. Yeah, and I, I.
Because I fight that battle.
You should have, you should have, like, I could have. Yeah, 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 yeah.
I don't know how to.
Sure.
We've been fighting that.
So the, so the state hasn't gone to, because I know Vermont may have. We've done them in both states. Mark's confident it'll be done. And if that's the case, then the contractor. Yeah, no, and that's a good point. And it's, that's what makes it such a tough environment. Because the fabric, I mean, they're calling the shots. They're saying this is all going to do. You know, and then the contractor has to make their bets. And we would, you know, entertain an option. Actually, it's not, not from the. Metalizing. Well, you know, we've got an interesting.
Yeah, I just.
It was reasonable, he was wrong.
Yeah, yeah, well, and the reason for that is because.
That's why we had a bunch of engineers.
Yeah, 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 we'll get out of the way.
These guys.
Hope I didn't scare anybody.
Well, I think, you know, some of your people have had questions. It's really, you know, I think I'm glad, so happy that you came. Really helped us out a lot and we'll need to start working on that. Transact as a plan.
Yeah, so I mean, if, let us know if we give too many questions, concerns or comments, but I didn't want to bring today a pushback. So, you know, that's the mainstays, you know, and we'll try our share to do that.
Well, I mean, of course, the group is. So did you get the whole?
Um, he asked me a question, but I don't know. I don't have bits of trust. I can ask our surveyor and see what he says. But he's just, he's just, you know, interpreting.
All the research that they do. But that's kind of what I wanted.
That's, that's what I'm sure. Sometimes you see options. Fair enough. Thank you very much. Good to see you.
Good to see you too. Thank you. Any questions? No, there is a question.
Yes. Yeah, that's what we're working. So, so that's, that's what we wanted to clear today so that we can do the abstract. We just wanted to make sure that if anybody had any concerns or a pushback, which we didn't hear in terms of, okay, there's rewards. You know, I don't know, we can wait a week or two, see if anything comes out of it, but, you know, we can move ahead and do the abstracts based on what we've got today.
Whenever you're talking to our surveyor, right?
Yeah. And then that would just be furnished to you guys and that would be something that could be recorded.
So we can start.
Yeah.
Do they need to record it before we start doing pricing?
Well, yeah, they'll, they'll need the information from us so that they can use that to generate their, their.
Okay, so they'll give us.
We'll give you the abstracts and then you guys will work with.
Wouldn't we hire and?
Yes. To, to do the, to do that work, the negotiations and all that. And if you're doing any. Yeah, I can, I can ask. A lot of times the state will do that. So we can, they, they've got all that information too, but we can.
All right, time is now. Again, thank you very much, Eddie H. for coming.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
See you again.
Yeah, we're, we're out there from time to time.
Yeah, I haven't seen anybody.
Please feel free.
That sounds good. Sounds real good. Thank you.
My dear, you've changed.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Do you folks need me for anything tonight?
No, keep it sunny out there, will you? Yeah, right. Tell that rain to go away.
I just wanted to come down to listen to the rich guy and, but he's great. Oh, can't wait. Because you'll be involved very heavily.
Is that what you're doing?
That's always job. So if you guys are good.
Yes, me too.
Thank you for coming. Can you come to the department?
10 o'clock, yeah, yeah.
10 o'clock tomorrow, yeah.
Coffee and donuts, don't worry.
He usually does that.
Russell make waffles.
We're going to get waffles. I'm coming.
I showed up this morning. He reminded me. Good thing people remind me.
Absolutely, right. Me too. Me too.
Enter. Did I do it?
Yep.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right, now we're moving on to whole business sale of town property on 874 Bowles Street.
I wanted to talk to you and follow up on our conversation that we.
I wanted to talk to you and follow up on our conversation that we had in March, I think it was, March twenty first, about the sale on Battle Street. You had asked me to check with the Conservation Commission, which I have sent that to Chris Shadler. And I know it was on her agenda, and I'm not sure what happened, so I'll ask when I, when, at that point, what happened. And I also asked the Historical Society. And they sent me an email saying, thank you very much, but they, they don't have the funds to do anything with that building. They want to concentrate on the meeting house. Uh, they did ask if they could come in and do some videotaping of what's inside the house and things like that, which I don't see a problem with. Phil Mitchell and I went up last week to go into the house, I've never been in the house, Phil had a key. He and I could not get into the house because there is, like, floor-to-ceiling trash in the kitchen. From, uh, I guess, well, how shall I put it, residents that, temporary residents that were there. So, I'm waiting for young Phil Mitchell to help me out getting into the front door. So, we are, we are working on that. Chris, if I could ask you, what, I know you had a meeting last week, what the Conservation Commission.
Well, the Conservation Commission was unsure of the direction of the slipboard. You know, how, how you were feeling about disposing of the house and some acreage, and then the field separate from the house? Or was the house going to be sold with the field? But the, the field itself is simply a field. It's the, 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 abutting to the Blackwater River. That for us, uh, you know, we, we took a vote on it, and we voted unanimously that we would be in favor of, um, you know, that land going into conservation. And we even voted unanimously that we would help with arranging the easement part of it, arranging for, you know, somebody like Five Rivers, although we're not sure they would take it. But, you know, arranging that part of it. So, you know, we would be in favor of protecting that part of the river.
It is a seven-acre property.
There, there was one more thing. I, you had said that there was something about, um, offering access to the river. And M J and Betsy pointed out that it's not a good place to get into the river because of the rapids downstream from there. There's a better place to get into the river.
It could be kind of exciting, yeah.
It's hilarious, actually.
That makes sense because of the, the falls right before the rivers, yeah.
That's right.
The, I talked to the land use coordinator, and he tells me that we can, there is one more subdivision allowed on that property. Was it two and a half acres that has to stay with the house? Okay, so if we went to the planning board for that, um, transaction, it would be two and a half acres, we'd have to leave with the house. And I would recommend that you sell the house as soon as possible. The piece across the street, which is separate, which is a little, I think it's point two three of an acre, but has a two-car garage. And Abutter has expressed interest, although we'd have to do the bid, I assume you'd want us to do the bid process.
Yeah.
As we normally, as we normally do. So, I guess where we are now, should we make an application to the planning board for the subdivision and hire a surveyor to survey it for us?
Well, I tell you, I think we should try to save that, any river frontage for the town. My personal opinion, and sell that house, I mean, the house is an old antique, if you like.
It could be a lovely house, but it needs, it needs to ferment, it's a lot of work.
What is the possibility or capability of adjust, when we're putting it up for sale, adjusting the deed to be no longer subdividable? And have a strip of conservation easement just along the waterfront? Is that something that's possible legally for us to do?
So in other words, leave it at the seven acres that it is now with a conservation easement on the waterfront portion? And.
However, man.
And with a restriction that you cannot subdivide it. I would look to Russ for that, I think probably it's an attorney question.
Yeah, but that's a, that's a good question to, to ask. And, I mean, I guess I'd have to look at it closer, what, what does that easement do, um, for the town? I mean, is it somewhere we could make it so people could also, I mean, I know you're not gonna enter into the river there, as Chris was saying, but, you know.
Well, the conservation easement is different than, you know, having access to it.
Yeah, conservation easement is different than town-owned conservation land.
Okay.
And so, um, you're, since we have the conservation chair here, she can probably correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, the, basically, when you have it just an easement, it means that whoever owns that, that plot of land going forward just can't do stuff to that area. Versus if the town owns it, we can turn it into an access to the river or whatever, as well as conserving.
You just want to keep an easement so that somebody could do something down by there.
Yeah, and, and since we have the chair here, um, I assume that you all were talking about it, since you, you voted on it. Was there any feeling of if it needed to be the entire property or kind of a buffer zone to the, the river? Or from previous scientific stuff that you've looked at with ordinances and stuff, what is the suggested width towards the river at that point?
Well, we want a buffer probably at least fifty feet, if not a hundred. But the problem is, I was over there today, looking at how steep that incline is going down there. And my concern would be, you know, if somebody wanted, if the owner wanted to put in a driveway across the top there, it would, it would involve a lot of fill in order to support vehicles going across, you know, if it came down from the road, from the north into that property. And the concern would be erosion. So if that's something that the board feels that it needs to, to do is to, um, instead of conserving the whole piece, which is what we think ought to happen, just because of all the extenuating circumstances, then I guess it would be better to have an easement of a hundred feet from the river inward. And then if, you know, if there, if there is, you know, that would, that would protect the integrity of the bank and everything else. And, and still maybe allow the person a driveway in.
Yeah, I would assume that any kind of driveway, they would have to have engineered fairly heavily because of the, this deep banking. But that's more of a, a planning board thing at this, at that point, so.
So I'll go ahead and find out the answer to that question.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think what's, needs to be clear here is that, you know, as we want to move on property that, um, is, you know, that, that we're taking back for taxes, that we want to be is, um, what do I want to say? If there's something that can benefit the town, because you're only gonna get what your tax money is owed, otherwise.
That's right.
We want it out, the money goes, we don't even nearly know where it goes, right? It goes to the state.
Well, in this case, um, we would probably have to file it with Mayor of that county, um, the court, for an interpleter. Um, and they hold it trying to get, um, a relative or some, something like that. We have not been successful at that, and we've spent a few, some resources doing it. I am pleased to say that after, I thought it went to the state after a number of years, but it comes back to the town.
Okay.
So, but again.
You mean they own, the town owns it and can sell it for what they want?
The, the extra money is what I'm talking about.
Oh, the extra money.
So, so what's the problem?
So if we sold it.
If we sold it from higher, you know, we can't keep what we're not owed, and so.
But if, that nobody ever claims that we can get it back.
But no one ever claimed it, um, although you never know, some relative could pop up someplace.
Yeah, something like twenty years, I think.
Isn't that?
It's a long time.
Well, I personally, I think we should just take the house and a couple acres and save all the rest of the land for the town for conservation. The house is gonna, if we sell a house, it's gonna be, you know, most people don't care about land anyway. And if we sell a house, we'll, you know, the town will get rid of it as a liability, and we'll be making tax money. And the town will still have land, because an old banker told me, you know, land.
They're not making it.
Right, it's supply and demand, and, and we got more people in town, and I think it'd be nice to be able to, be able to see the river, even if they walk, park up on the road and walk down and have picnics or whatever the heck they want. Um, and so if you have a land, if somebody owning that house, and they can just say, I don't want anybody walking around my house and all that, and who knows? But if we keep the land ourselves and that's ours, it's not, we're not gonna lose money because technically it's, they're not gonna spend that much more for the property.
You might want to keep in mind that, um, if you went the route of having, hiring a surveyor, I mean, it sounds like it's putting out, and you are putting out money right away. But I think, and I would make sure of this, that we would be able to keep that money to repay ourselves back, um, from the proceeds.
That's, that's what I was gonna ask you, my question. Whatever costs we incur, we should be able to reimburse ourselves.
You know, that, I think would be an allowable cost that we could do.
Now, is this also something that we should, I don't know if I'm talking on a turn here, but is it something where you should get some more of the opinions of the town? You know, with like a small, a public hearing of some kind to see what, what people.
Well, that's certainly up to the board, um, if you, if you wanted to do that.
We would have to anyways.
The planning board would have to hold a public.
Okay, okay.
So that would, for a subdivision, it would have.
You mean, you mean for, if we actually do where we're gonna do the subdivision and keep a certain amount of the property? Sell the house with a certain amount of property?
I mean, you could hold a public, any informal public hearing to advise people what your plans were if you decided to do that, to go that route. I think you have a good opportunity to, if you want to acquire that piece of land, here's your chance.
Yeah.
Because you're not gonna have that again. There's been a lot of interest in that house, and I, I think that the proceeds are gonna be well in excess of what we're owed.
And they, and they don't need all that money, I mean, they, all that land, they need, you know, most people don't care about.
You know, I would love to have a place that I have this lovely field next to me that I didn't have to pay taxes on, because, let's face it, you know, it's.
And then people can go with their kids, walk down, and walk to the river, sitting by the river, out.
And you know, and who knows how many people will do that, I mean, but I don't think it's a deterrent for the sale at all.
Well, the thing is, it's just so, you know, there's so much beautiful water, and yet, if nobody can have access to it. I think the biggest mistake they ever made, we used to have a public beach on Winter Pocket. And what they should have done, so I wasn't a selectman then, but, um, I would have kept it for the town, and then bought that house, it was for sale, I forget that, it used to be Austin's, I think. And buy the house that was there was a piece of junk, really, it was like for thirty, forty thousand dollars. Tear it down at parking there and kept the, kept the beach, um, for the kids, so they could have something, you know, there were, I've heard somebody, oh, we have it behind the school. Well, crying out loud, that place is dangerous. And, you know, the kids would climb on the rocks, did your kids ever do that?
No, well, they did, I didn't know.
Well, but it got really dangerous because they swim over, and the bigger kids want to jump off the rocks, and, you know, but that happens.
We never did that.
And then, and the other thing I had a big problem with, there was, it says no swimming, by, I don't know if it still does, I bet it does. It's broader selectmen, so how do you take your kids and say, oh, you can swim, never mind that sign, and when they get older, say, well, we don't have to worry about that sign, because my mother let me swim in the water, and said, no swimming. So that used to bother me, but I, I mean, I have river furniture, but I try, but I still think the whole town should be able to appreciate the water we have in here. So that's why I'd like to save that, because it's not gonna, you know, people are gonna just keep coming into town.
I have, I have one more thing.
I'll just point out, she's running the meeting, not me, that's my voice.
Oh, oh, I still love you, but go ahead.
Okay, thank you. You, you may, you may be able to maximize the amount of money you get through the house by including the land with the house. And simply putting a conservation easement on certain parts of that land. So just keep it all one, you don't have to go through.
But the point is, we don't get any extra money than what is owed, it's like, you know, the, so.
But people do care about land. I mean, a house with seven acres sounds dandy to me, you know, and, and with river frontage. And that, that's, there's a lot of appeal there, so.
Well, yeah, that's why I think the town should be, and the towns taxpayers should be enjoying some of that.
I agree with you completely, I agree completely. And, and I think that both things can be accomplished possibly by leaving it all one lot, not subdividing it, and simply putting a conservation easement, uh, you know, on, on three or four acres.
Yeah, you think people are gonna want to buy a house and have people walking back and forth by their house?
Nobody's, I don't think anybody's gonna walk back and forth. And it's a viewpoint, like you were saying, you know, it's open land.
Well, they see in the house, even if we sold the house with two acres, the view is still gonna be there.
It's true.
So, and then the town would still have that extra money, that extra land to enjoy.
Yeah, one of the, the things that is interesting about it is, based on where it is on the river, we have public access or semi-public access. One is, of course, behind the school here at the park, which is just down the street from it.
Yeah.
And the second one is at the bridge, where everybody goes and hangs out anyway, which is the other side of the falls. So it's not like you can walk down there and put a boat in and start going down the river, because you immediately hit the fall.
No, I know boating is not, you can't boat in that river anyway, really, but, but I'm just thinking it's a place, it's, it's land that people can enjoy if they want to enjoy, and just sit by the, paint, take the paints down there and paint the river, you know what I mean? So, once it's gone, it's gone, and we can't get it back.
Who, who takes care of it? Would, would we own it, we do, right? In a sense that because.
I would say.
Because, you know.
If we owned it, we would probably turn it over to the Parks Department.
Yeah, because you want to keep it ruchogged, and, you know, so that needs to be thought of, you know.
It definitely needs to be ruchogged.
That's kind of what Chris is saying, yeah, just because maintaining the property. I've seen plenty of fields that we've gone back in and had to, to, um, you know, bring them back so that you can see the river, and so you can get to the river. So I guess that would be something that we would need to think about, um, the amount of, you know, maintenance to that prop, you know, what, what's, if we, if we have a conservation easement. I mean, they could decide not to keep it open, they could decide not to maintain it, whoever, I mean, they probably wouldn't, but that could be a problem.
Ruchog once a year.
So I'll go ahead and I'll get some prices together on both options that we've talked about. And then I'll wait for the board to let me know what they would like me to do.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. The small lot across the street that is kind of part of that.
Yeah.
I noticed that that actually has a driveway cutoff off of the highway, which is one of the challenges that we've had towards the safety building, for getting the second driveway in. So we may, uh, when we talk about, um, the ability to move that towards the butter, since you said it was no butter that was interested, that would be something I would be interested in finding out, and have, uh, make sure you have that discussion with our, our road agent and those folks at the safety building.
You mean the second curb cut?
I really can't imagine.
Well, it's more than they only allow you to add X number of cuts in a period, and we could remove that one, and then we'd have one available.
Right. Right, we would kind of do it, a curb cut exchange, yeah.
And since we own it, we can do that before we sold it.
That's right.
Okay.
That's a very good point.
Thank you. I think.
Right. Thanks. And thank you, Chris. Thank you, Chris. All right, so any, are we gonna Google her? Let's see, so was there any other properties that we needed to talk about?
That was the only one that I had for you to talk about tonight. The other one, uh, that I'd like to sell is one seventy-three Cornhill Road. And I've got to get with Phil and get in there and get that, Emmett wants to cut trees on that.
Oh, that's right.
And so I need to just talk with him about that. And again, I just, um, I think we've done a lot of work in trying to get these places back on the tax rolls.
Mm-hmm.
Because we're not doing them any good by hanging on to them.
No, and that's true, except, and now they've got next door to that house, it's like a junkyard now. They're starting, I get, the guy's trying to work on old, old trucks. Like he's got about half a dozen in there, yard.
On Cornhill Road?
Yeah. I noticed that, I said, we gotta get rid of it fast.
Well, then maybe I should put up a fence so people buying won't notice.
There you go.
So rain talk and our installation quotes.
We, Russ, do you wanna speak to that?
Do you have the quote?
I do have the quote, Russ.
Cause that would help, cause I gave it to you.
Would I ever be unprepared to answer that?
So at the last meeting, we discussed possible solutions that were brought to the Department of Labor. It's concern of having the cables going across the floor and trying to make it a little bit easier to use for the public or for general meetings other than the select board. And that way also we wouldn't be lugging the equipment up and down the stairs and sending it up every day. So we received the quote from CompuTech for, and putting it into the ceiling and getting rid of this setup and having a more permanent setup. And it comes to about, well, it says, I don't know, they didn't add it up for me, one, or did you add it up?
Approximately fourteen hundred.
It was approximately fourteen hundred dollars.
And to, to clarify, you said, uh, replacing, but that's not actually replacing this equipment.
No, it's replacing the equipment.
Camera and then we keep this as well for the other conference room.
So this would be a new camera for the ceiling in here and then we'd have this camera to use in another meeting room or something like that.
And we could move the actual device, so it'd be, have a permanent home on the shelf back there. But if we needed to move it downstairs, we could still unplug it and move it downstairs and then put it back after.
And this would be, I think, a lot more professional and probably much.
Much more user friendly.
More user friendly.
And to, to clarify, the, um, the first one is, is the camera, that's the expensive part. Um, and the PTZ that's there, um, basically means that you can control it with a remote, so you can aim it. It's as, as needed per, per meeting. Probably it would just, much like the, the existing one that's in the ceiling that we can't use, uh, probably once it's set and probably won't ever be touched, but if need be, it, it could be.
We look to you to know how this pricing is, I mean, I would ever price that.
As, as far as camera. Yeah, as far as cameras go, it's, it's not super expensive, it's not a inexpensive camera for up there. Um, but it's, it's not horrible, uh, and rather than me trying to get involved with, you know, I would get this particular camera or not, um, I'm not the one that's gonna maintain it going forward. So I think it's important that, uh, their recommendation is reasonable, which it is, and that they are ready to maintain it. So if they're suggesting it, I think they are.
Also, CompuTech did reach out to the people who created the device that we used to record and capture it. They get a list of compatible equipment and they recommended that camera.
I noticed that their quote is valid for ten days and the ten days was last Saturday. So I'll call them to see if it's still valid.
Yeah, unfortunately, we meet every two weeks, so.
Well, there's nothing, we can do it on.
We can just make the contingent, you know, if we want to. I guess that's the question, what, what do you think about the, the additional camera?
This is partly too, because we need to get rid of the wires.
I think, I mean, when, when, and I'll talk about this in a little while, but there, uh, the inspector did mention the wires on the floor and I've been worried about the wires a lot more. Um, and it would be a lot easier, I think, for all of us to have this permanent camera here as well as looking professional.
That's cause it looks a little classier not to see all those wires.
This looks like something I could do.
My original thought had been that we would mount this camera up there and get a less expensive one for downstairs. But this would definitely give us the flexibility of anything we would want to do in the future. And it's not horribly out of range, it's less expensive than we would've been paying for this streaming service, so. And we do have some wiggle room in the technology fund.
Okay.
To pay for this.
So do we wanna make a motion to
Sure.
accept this, um, proposal as long as it's still valid?
Yeah, make that, make that, and I'll second it.
Okay, that's what I made for a motion, I'm gonna do it.
Question?
Okay.
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, all, aye, that's what I say, all in favor?
Aye. My question for the, the board is, uh, installation, of course, is labor and they charge whatever time periods. Um, since we have the existing camera up there, do you want me to remove it so maybe we won't have to pay quite as much?
Well, that would be great.
Sure, you wanna volunteer your time?
Yeah.
Okay, I will try, I will try to get down here within the next week or so to pull that out of the ceiling.
Awesome. Want me to make a big setup or I don't want that?
We got one on the board. Which he might even talk about.
Those stuff left?
Yeah. I think it was in the report, like, you haven't secured everything.
Oh. Yeah. So, yep.
All right, moving on, uh, new business, appointments of your deputy forest warden.
We received two suggestions of candidates to be deputy forest fire wardens and they are actually appointed by the state, um, but the board needs to sign off on them. Rob Wolinski brought these in to me. Um, both of these gentlemen are on the fire department, Cameron Lorden and Greg Taylor.
You said they're both candidates or they both for approval or are we supposed to choose one?
No, no, they're both.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, so we don't have to choose one?
You don't have to choose one. You have to just say if you, if you agree with their recommendations. And then what happens after you sign this, we, I send it to the state and they get appointed.
I don't know either one of them, so I guess, the fire department must know, must agree.
Right, and Rob has suggested them, this.
They're both, um.
And they're willing to do it.
Cameron Lorden, I believe, is, uh, works for the City of Concord, um, on the fire department. And Greg Taylor's been on the fire department for a while, I think he works for Concord Hospital.
He, he does.
Um, has a, but he's, he's trained in firefighting and so forth.
Sounds good to me, volunteers, they wanna go away.
Do we need to make a motion to start it?
You don't really need to make a motion, but I do need your signatures. So I'll give it to you when I give you all these signatures later. Thank you.
All right, um, abatements, tax exemptions and credits.
So we have a couple of abatements for you, uh, they are all for the campground. One person is a second abatement for, for camper being registered, but they do the bills in two parts. We abated the first one, but didn't get cleared on the second one. So we're just abating the second half of the year cause it is registered, she doesn't have a deck, she's all set. And the other ones are for campers that still owe money but are no longer camping at the campground. And from what I've talked to about Karen, it's almost impossible to collect that money afterwards.
So we need two motions on this, one for the eighty dollar abatement and the other for the four forty-two, which is made up of, you have, I've got an updated one.
Oh, okay, I haven't had what's updated.
Yeah, okay.
God, I don't read.
That was updated today and I'll, I'll give that to you for the motion.
Okay.
And then we need them signed and we can sign them and.
So these, do these updates go to the, directly to the people or do they go to the campground and then the campground sends them out?
That is the, Russ works all the time with these campgrounds and the state law is we're supposed to assess, for example, if people put on a deck next to their camper or if their camper is not registered, um, as a, I guess, a vehicle.
As a vehicle.
Um, you know, that it's taxable. Um, the problem that we really find we get into if people don't pay their taxes and there are those, we don't have anything to lean. I mean, it's, it's very frustrating. Uh, so those are bills that Karen has sent that are, and some of them have good reasons why they need to be abated. For example, they may be registered or, or they weren't there on April first. Um, and a lot of them are just really to save us money in the long run, so.
So I make a motion to abate, um, eighty dollars for, do I have to say the name and stuff or just?
Just say the campground number.
The camp, okay, the campground, um. Give us a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll get this. And then, um, I make another motion for the four hundred and forty-two dollars abatement for the campground.
Wait, they have four seventy-three.
Well, there's an updated.
There's the, hers is an update.
Hers is, yeah.
Oh, okay, okay.
Or is it?
No, it's less.
It's less, it's four.
Some people have paid and Karen pointed out that some have an accounting.
Yeah, that's been updated since you got your pack up.
Okay, second.
All in favor?
Aye. So I'll put those in for you to sign when you go sign, thank you.
Say.
Thank you.
And the last part about that is we have two exemptions for you to sign. I verified that they had all the required documentation, some of them are qualified for those, and there are two other tax credits. So I just need to sign.
Oh, we'll sign it, okay.
Yep, so we just need to sign it.
Oh, God, on that page.
I was looking in the package.
I have, right, that's signature print, so.
I don't think it was in the package.
Right, that's why I asked.
It's the eighteenth, right?
Yes.
Yes, Alden.
Alden, Alden.
Tax day.
Yes, it was.
Yes, tax day was painful.
It was painful.
Oh, me and the hybrid all was back.
My, my checkbook was like, oh, no.
Well, the, the state tax was good to me.
There was a day when I used to get money back.
But then you figured out how to make sure that you. Really, so what, my, my mother always said you're not supposed to use IRS as a savings bank.
That's right. Well, my mother used to say, why would you want them to use your money?
That's right, oh, yes, no, same thing, yes.
I'm not trying to use your money for free.
Do you have notes, your missus had?
Yeah.
Had me in Hawaii.
Miss, I ain't no lady.
No, they were just going above us, huh? Real boss.
Well, all I'd say is, well, what does, should you, should you, uh, without, isn't there RSA on that?
I do, sure do. But you know, the beauty is, I am perfectly comfortable with who I am, so it doesn't really bother me that much.
All right, so correspondence.
So the correspondence, and you've read the, the, um, the letter as a result of the inspection that we had, March twenty-nine. The town had never been inspected before. I think most of these things are quite minor. Um, and can easily be addressed. Uh, we do have to, and I don't really, I've got two things, we have to get an eyewash station for the town office.
Really?
Which I find a little.
Can't you just go in the sink and?
What are you doing to spit in somebody's eye?
You know, yeah, I guess so. Uh, and the other thing that I, and I've asked about this and I, but I don't know how far I wanna push it. Um, we need the data sheets, the MS data sheets for the chemicals that are down there, which are just chemicals that one would get at Walmart, for example.
But they're probably the cleaning supplies.
It's just like toilet cleaner and floor cleaner.
Any other cleaning suppliers, you, you can just go to their website.
That's what I thought, yeah, so that's easy to do.
Which, reading this, their complaint and the reason we need the eyewash is because anywhere you mix chemicals, it needs it. And are they just, are they including dilution of cleaning supplies? Like if you dilute some bleach or some.
Cause you wonder why anybody's mixing, they're gonna go get the bottle and then wanna apply it and you can apply it down.
Right, like what's being mixed?
I don't, yeah.
So that would be my question on that one, but.
The other big thing on this is the, I have to include the fourteen hundred rules in the safety policy. So, and coincidentally, we're working on our policy, so that, that really works in well with that. Joint loss management minutes were great, I mean, we had those, we had meetings, we were meeting quarterly and she was okay with that. You know, so, and the police station, the safety building, oh my gosh, they had an emergency light that didn't go on.
Perfect.
Oh, thank goodness. Cause I have to write a letter back.
You must sit up at nights figuring out all these laws.
You know what I always love is how do you know, like, did, right, just that day.
Yeah, right, exactly.
The, the one that I thought might, uh, be more annoying to deal with was the one that they mentioned for, uh, the second floor of the safety building and the electrical panel being blocked by conduit. That seems really weird to me, but, uh, if so, that would be more of a challenge to change.
No.
So.
What it is, is it's plastic conduit pipes that were just leaned against it. When they were building, they're building and using the conduit pipes, the plastic pipes were leaned against it. So they were just picked up and moved.
Okay.
Oh, my.
I like it.
I like it. We had water pumps in front of our fuse box and so, you know, we have to move those, so that's easier.
Oh, yeah.
It was interesting in the library because the emergency lights are really high in there and she says, do you have anything that you could test those with? I'm just a short guy, I. You know that laugh?
You're wondering about I can, like that.
Did those get replaced when we replaced all the others?
They did, yeah.
They're on a maintenance scale.
She said, they were all new, weren't they? And I said, yes, and that, so that was, I'm glad we had that done.
Perfect.
Anyway, we will be able to respond to them in a timely manner.
Perfect. Public comment?
Um, there's a few more, if you'll let me go through.
Yes.
We did get a few thank you notes from the community action program for the money that people voted to give them as well as CASA, um, court-appointed advocate. We got a butter notice, um, for a case with the, is this with the ZBA or the DeBello?
What?
The, a butter notice we got for Mr. DeBello.
Oh, no, that's the planning board, they're doing subdivision, but we own a lot next to it.
Okay. We also got a notice from the tax collector that she has to give you when she's, when she sent the last tax bill. And she mailed it November eighth, which you've probably got one, so you know better.
Wait, what's the a butter thing? What are they doing? Where, where's the butter, where's that a butter, a butter to this?
We must own something next to it.
We own a lot, that's next to where the subdivision's happening.
No, I know, but where, on this road?
It's on Battle Street. Uh, you know, when you're coming across the Davisville Bridge, you see this area right up on top of the hill before you go down, look over there, there's a lot on this side of the road. And this guy etched in a driveway beyond the rock wall.
So we own some of that? We own button land?
No, we own something that's connected, it's a hundred acre parcel, so somewhere we have something that touches.
Whoa, that's interesting.
So he's subdividing off, I think the house lot to sell, isn't it building his?
Oh, okay, all right, I got you now.
But if you had any concerns, you could go and, you know.
We could go, I'm, I'm sure we'll be represented at the, uh.
Yeah, yeah.
At the planning board meeting.
That's all for correspondence.
Um, we should probably briefly mention the, uh, two correspondence that we got for, in email. We should probably briefly mention the two correspondence that we got for an email about the Close Pen Bridge.
Oh, yeah, that's a very good point. We did get some correspondence on the Close Pen Bridge.
We did.
We got two, one of them was from Mike Jettie, expressing his concern for when the construction happens, that the bus, everyone knows about, has a plan.
Right, about that, yes.
Coordination with the state.
Coordination, everyone knows, whatever. And we're not quite at that point, but we will, you know, be aware of it, and the other, no, it's gone out of my head, that was the other one.
Not for the bridge, not, not another.
It had to do with the bridge.
The other one was.
Oh, it was from Bruce, and concerned about the state funding, and he was kind of looking at me tonight, because I have asked him, I have been on him about that state funding constantly, he's so tired of me asking about the state funding.
That's why I brought it up. Sure, it's covered to everybody.
But, you know, because I've been concerned with that, I've also talked with Ron Klein about it, because now I find what I wanted was great, okay. So, that does it.
So now public comment. Oh, yes, Mr. Adams.
I picked up my new cruiser today.
Ooh.
That's at the station, the only bad part is we won't have any equipment for it until the end of July, because everybody is back away.
Wow.
So we're gonna be running the old car for at least another three months.
Well, that's always saves a new car.
Yeah, and, well, what we're gonna do is, I think Lieutenant Mitchell's gonna take the old car, so there'll be less mileage put on it, and we'll patrol him and put all the mileage, take his car and put the mileage on half.
So, are we having the name, are we having an Incanito car, or?
No, his is gonna get bettered, we're gonna, we're gonna put a new design on it, though. Something a little different.
A new design?
Bring it a little up to date.
Oh, okay, all right.
Stars and stripes.
Like a smile or something?
Your name, your name in big lights.
Something that looks good.
Maybe park the, park the new one down by the Close Pen Bridge road.
It's funny you say that, because it's nice to, if you park one at the station and you put the other one out in the road, they think you're sitting at the station, so you're sitting down the road on a radar, you're rocking. That's what works out good.
That is so sneaky.
I know, it's cheesy, but it's where it works.
In Florida, they put sheriff cars with nobody in them all over the place.
They put state police cars on the interstate with mannequins in them.
Yeah. Marlboro, New Hampshire used to have Captain Cardboard in there.
Yeah. I can't remember which place it was, but the, one of them used to do it, and they, they had the mannequin outside with a radar gun, but the radar gun was, was just a desk lamp.
Oh, my God, that's awesome.
We drove by Captain Cardboard one time, my son was small, and he goes, wow, is that guy flat?
Oh, that's awesome.
Oh, my God.
That's all, yeah.
And nobody needs him, I think I will bid everybody adieu for tonight.
Good night.
Thank you. Good night.
Maybe see you guys tomorrow.
Drive safe, don't leave the speed limit now.
I'll try not to.
Okay.
Have a good night.
True. So, approval of draft meeting minutes for four-four, four-four NP, one, four-four NP two.
Yeah, NP is the number.
Oh, okay, non-public.
Yes, it was one meeting and two.
Sorry, I was just like, we're.
I probably should have asked what NP stand for.
Sorry.
And one of the sessions, the meet, the minutes were sealed.
The minutes were what?
Sealed.
Oh, sealed, oh, sorry.
Yeah, that was this second.
I don't understand that language.
Do I, this is what I say, do I have a motion to accept the minutes as ready?
Second, you got a motion.
There you go.
Is that, was that, was that right?
Well, you, you can say that, or you can say you moved it to, you can.
Oh, oh, I can do that.
So I second it, so.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye, sorry.
She's supposed to do that, she's running a meeting.
Well, and as you can tell, I'm used to my, my, my roles, you sit here and I sit over there. But, yes. So, accepting the meeting as is?
Thank you.
All right, now, I make a motion for the trustee of the trust funds.
Well, we will be.
Oh, we will be, but we need to read that.
And, and I have to say, this is for impact withdrawal, impact fee withdrawal, not trustees and trust funds, that's to change that.
And you'll see the, you know, the second sheet should be what it's for.
Okay, so, but I read this part, right? Yeah, so, to request the treasurer to issue a check in the amount of three hundred and seventy-five dollars for invoice dated April eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two payable to Phil Mitchell and Sons for labor to run new wires from the upgraded telephone system, replacement of water filter, and new emergency light for upstairs hallway. The funds to be withdrawn from accumulated impact fees for the public safety building.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, I did that better. Anybody wanna see it?
I believe you.
After you're already accepted, that'd be kinda bad.
Paying guys.
Okay, so now we're doing the motion, motion for trustees of the trust funds.
That, that, I don't have one.
Okay.
I, I didn't change it to, I should have changed it to impact withdrawal.
Gotcha, so signing the documents is, what's next?
Right.
Do we have a non-public this tonight?
We will, yes. I need you to okay the manifest and the payroll manifest.
But I don't have to make a motion, we just review it, or do we?
Yeah, certainly, we'll, we'll just review it in one time. Can you mention what the CLIA lab program is about? That was the second one for like a hundred eighty bucks, because I didn't recognize that name.
I wish that Steve was still here, because he could tell you it's something to do with the, I thought it was to do with the police department. Yeah, it says it's a rebuilt certificate fee for like two years worth, but, yeah, I can run downstairs and get the bill.
So that's a, that's a police.
I believe so, okay.
Want me waving down? If you hate me?
So, just go ahead and, if everything was correct, go ahead and sign, right?
And custom signals is the phone? Two thousand seven hundred and eighty.
I have my Google, where's your, where's your signature?
Yeah, the rest makes sense. Seeing you in the tail there, I remember earlier, as we were getting into the budget season, they were doing some weird things with, with the billing, I'd like to take a look at the, the billing next time I'm into, see if they've straightened that out and/or what we might need to ask them to do.
Okay. What, what would they do?
In short, rather than sending us a check, they were putting it as credited.
Oh, for the solar?
Yeah, and as long as they either sent us a check or started crediting it, it's fine, I just wanna make sure they're actually doing that.
Yeah, yeah.
Typically, the energy committee will stay on top of that, but.
This was a, last time you made a motion for impact fees for the Barracuda backup server for the police department, and it's because of the C-just, but this is the purchase order for it, that I would like you to sign if you would.
Barracuda.
I know, I don't.
Even when you say it, I'm sorry, fine, I'm about out, I'm trying.
I'm just a huge bitch. But, you know, I thought.
I love their things.
I thought it was a scam, because the bill says.
They're saying, yeah.
Remove the mystery, well, the. Really?
Yeah, the, the, the way they wrote the bill is a little bit funny.
Or it would make you kinda wonder.
I have energized updates. I have, we have a person who had lost their property has redeemed it. Awesome.
Great.
And, and so I have a deed that I need to, Russ is gonna go get his stuff, we'll hold that thought.
Oh, oh, right.
He needs to.
Yes.
He needs to bless it. In the meantime, why don't I have you, he's got three, he likes to have three of these, that's the timber, report of timber cut, and it's got a few places for you to sign in there.
Yeah.
Oh, so this is just what was cut and collected? Yes, yeah. Milo, do you still have the, the other one of this, the four forty-two?
I'll look, hold on.
Wait, you can get to it.
Oh, you like to have three, I'd say, because.
I guess one, you would know better than I do, one was a state, one.
Yeah, yeah. I'll tell you, they're really good for the tree business.
It's the Payworth Reduction Act.
Yeah, is this the one you were writing?
I think so, it's four forty-two, yeah.
Yeah, so we can sign it.
Yeah.
Thank God, you noticed that.
Yeah.
Are we excited to?
Yeah, when you're done with that, give me that, I like that, yeah, there you go. Makes you feel like you're almost kind of important, but really?
Yeah, really, if we only, if only a thousand dollars apiece, we'll, we'd be rich, yeah.
Yeah, but what would you do with it?
Yeah, right.
And this is why doctor's signatures turn into, here's a line.
That's right, I know, well. You got a little boy on you.
Aye.
Perfect timing.
What happened?
Perfect timing.
So, our notary has just arrived, this is, this is a deed of these three signatures from you, and Russ will.
So this was redeemed?
Yes.
It sounds so great.
Very professional sounding. Did we send any evidence?
Yes.
Will we have any further documents to sign?
No.
And is it standard procedure to or not to mention where property is being redeemed?
I, I don't think I would, okay, I'm just asking, because I don't know, you know, I mean, the, the taxpayer, former taxpayer, now taxpayer again, has the right to redeem it within a certain amount of time, and they have done that, which is awesome.
Yeah, it is awesome. So, is there anything else?
I do have, would like to ask you to have, I've got two non-public sessions I'd like you to have, the first one is under ninety-one A three-two D, which is consideration of acquisition of property, real estate property, Chris Shaver's gonna be with you on this one.
And the second one?
The second one's going to be personnel, ours, under RSA ninety-one A three-two A.
So we're gonna go into a non-public at eight fifty-eight?
Right, Russell should be.
Russell's for the soul.
And we're, we'll adjourn the meeting.
Yeah, for everybody else, we will immediately adjourn after the non-public sessions, before I or Dee second that, and then we do our motion, is there any other comment for the public portion of the meeting?
No.
No, all right, so I would second that.
So then is it all in favor?
Right.
Aye.